Welcome to the Board of Selectment meeting, our regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, February 28, 2018. This meeting is being shown live on Channel 9. It's also being recorded and will be shown throughout the week. If anybody's going to record video or sound, just need to let me know. Okay. Let's start with the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do we have any public input before we start? Okay, thank you. So, I think we're going to go a little bit out of order. We're going to let the -- we have the Open Space Committee here and they're going to give us a report on their status and what they've been up to. Helen, if you want.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we take Agenda Item 60 out of order and do that one next.
Second.
Can I say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. You want to come up?
Ms. Bidlak.
We need you to tell us who you are and what you're at.
Yeah, okay. So, my name is Ellen Bidlak and I'm the chairperson of the Open Space Committee and I live over on Main Street. And, yeah, so, we've been meeting for about a year or so and we have -- it was early in the fall, we conducted a survey, we sent out to everybody, a survey to get a sense from the residents about what they wanted for open space and that kind of thing. And we're going to be putting this, ultimately, the results into an open space plan. And we've been working with Serpid, Bill Napolitano specifically, to help us put together some information about the town resources and hopefully set some goals. And we're going to begin to start meeting with other folks like the Parks and Rec and CPC and Conservation and stuff like that and to get any documents that they have, planning documents and input that they might have as well. So, I'll just give a couple summary results from our survey, which we got 158 responses, which is about 2% or 3% of the responses that we sent out, which I understand is fairly typical for surveys like this. And there was a pretty good spread of -- well, the first question we asked was, "How long have people lived in Dayton?" And the most common response was over 25 years. So, the -- and then the others were about evenly split, about 10%, 15% for the most part. Then we asked, let's see here, the average household had between two and four people in their household. The average age of the person filling out the form, most people were in the block of 35 to 49. There was 39% of the people were in that block and then there was even distribution of the other age groups. There was strong support generally for open space protection of all kinds. The strongest responses, we asked a series of questions about what kinds of purposes for open space, you know, protection would they want, like wildlife habitat, water supply protection, preserving waterways, historical interests, passive recreation areas like for trails and stuff like that, and then facilities. And the strongest response was 77% of the people said that they wanted open space to preserve waterways such as rivers, ponds, and mountains. And that was followed by 75% of the people said that they wanted open space for water supply protection and for wildlife habitat as well. So, really good response. We also asked how satisfied were people with the facilities and it was a mixed response. We asked them for different age groups, so we asked for like, "How satisfied are you for facilities for adults, teenagers, eight- to 12-year-olds, and then one-to-seven-year-olds?" So, we were fairly even split between satisfied and not satisfied. So, it seems like there's some room for improvement in that area.
Which one's the biggest not satisfied?
The biggest not satisfied was 50% were not satisfied for the recreational opportunities for adults. And that was followed by teenagers with 46% of the people saying they were not satisfied with opportunities for teenagers. And it was evenly split for the 18- to 12-year-olds with 36% in each category. And people were most satisfied with the one-to-seven-year-olds and 41% of the people were satisfied with the opportunities for that age group. So, opens -- the next question was, "Does Dayton need more open space for public use?" And we had 95% of the people responding, "Yes."
What was that for?
The question was, was just a yes/no question. "Does Dayton need more open space for public use?" And 95% of the people said, "Yes." So, very strong response that, "Yes, we need to be working on these issues." And I asked about recreational opportunities. "Which recreational opportunities would you like to see more of in Dayton?" We listed a bunch. I'll just give you the two top ones. And people could choose any, all of them, or any combination. So, 84% of the people said they wanted more walking and hiking trails and then 80% said that they wanted a bike trail. So, again, very strong support. Asked, "How are people using open spaces in town?" 92% of the people said that they're using it for walking. And then there was a mix of other responses, like 12% saying hunting and that kind of thing. The facility people most were, were most, using the most is the area behind the town hall, the playground and the track. And, let's see, what other questions? And that was, that was pretty much it. So, very good, very nice to see that so many people want to see, you know, open space in the town and that kind of thing.
We did a similar survey several years ago. It was kind of the same result.
Yeah.
People, they want open space, they want recreational opportunities. It was nice to hear too, is they want outdoor recreational opportunities, walking, hiking, bike riding and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
So, that's, that's what we need to focus.
Yeah, uh-huh. So, we're definitely, you know, hopefully heading in the right direction in this way. Is there any other questions or anything you have for us?
I just have a general question about overall and maybe this is something the committee hasn't really had time to focus on. Is it the plan of the Open Space Committee to have the open space and recreation plan become part of the already existing master plan or will this be a standalone document?
I believe it's a standalone document. So, I think we can take some of the things that are already in the master plan and put them into our open space plan, but it will have to go through an approval process up at the state. We'll submit a draft and they'll comment and that kind of thing. But it's, as far, as my understanding, it's a standalone plan.
I think it's good you're talking to Conservation and stuff because, you know, I think of all the committees, Conservation, Land Use Committee, Open Space Committee, CPC, because they all, all play a part in that. So, I think that's a great thing and that's one of the things, I think, we're all trying to focus a little bit on getting these committees to work together rather than independently.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. That's one of the things that I think we are seeing our role as, is to try to, you know, particularly with the open space plan, it's going to entail, you know, pieces of recreation, outdoor recreational opportunities and conservation goals and that kind of thing. And hopefully, we can continue to work with the different boards to implement that plan once it's written and help them find resources hopefully for those goals.
Did Mr. Frenette from the Conservation Commission tell you about the project he's working on personally, building observation platforms that are going to be in Broad Cove?
I heard he was working on some things at Broad Cove, but I had not heard the details.
They are going to be units that can be moved and the point is to open up the cove to the public in certain areas. And these observation platforms will be placed in the cove here and there, wherever, and anyone can use them and they will have like a space to sit and a shelf or something for writing and people can go there and do photography or if they just want to go down there and read a book or watch the wildlife and whatever. But he's, I think he's got one that's almost complete because we're hoping to have it on display at the regional high school when the STEAM, S-T-E-A-M, Expo takes place on April 7. So, that's another area that is protected and open, but it's going to be accessible to the public more than it is right now.
That's really nice. That's good to hear. Thank you.
Yeah, so that's coming.
I just want, before you go, I just wanted to thank you guys. I think you are, the whole committee is doing such a fantastic job.
Thank you.
I know it's a lot of work to accommodate different people's schedules, especially when they're on different boards and committees, so it's very admirable and I think the townspeople are very happy with your work so far.
Oh, great. Thank you very much Brett. I appreciate those comments. Thank you.
You're doing a great job. It's such an important --
Thank you. Hopefully, we'll continue to live up to those expectations.
Absolutely. If you need anything from any of us, I'm always happy to help, so don't hesitate to reach out.
Do you need more committee members?
I don't think so at this point. We're going to meet next week and we're going to review the applications you gave us and we're going to talk about those issues. I don't think I'm ready, we're, I don't feel like I can really answer that question right now. Do you want to hear the, I forgot to introduce the rest of my committee members.
Oh, absolutely.
Hi, I'm Joe Markin.
Hi.
I'm the chair. I'm also a member of the CPC. So, we work closely together. Ellen, we're doing a great job.
Absolutely.
Got much more to say.
I'm Dave Rosa. I live on Lincoln Avenue and as some of you might know, I'm part of the parks, I'm one of the commissioners of the Parks and Recreation Commission, which, and I'm also on the Open Space Committee and those two things, hopefully I can help those things dovetail productively over time. But, and by the way, thank you for your presentation this evening because it answered a number of questions that I had. So, thank you for that. So, back to families and recreation and here in Dayton. One of the things that Parks and Recreation has taken under consideration is a playground for younger children in North Dayton. And so, while we're discussing this and reviewing how to arrive there and whatnot, we did a little research with regard to North Dayton and the age of the children that would be very, very close to a park in North Dayton. And it turns out there's 268 children in that immediate area. And so, this speaks of the appropriateness of having a playground near, adjacent to the baseball field there and basketball court, which we hope to renovate shortly. But all those things are in the work and so why do I, you know, take time to say that? Because as we move forward, just as the Open Space Committee and you need, we do need public input and we need public support to accomplish these things. And I, unfortunately, recently, we had a little, I'll say, perturbation with one of our commissioners because, in my opinion, some undue and inappropriate influence was being attempted to be applied. And so, that will sort itself out later, but we need public input, we need positive public input so that we do things out in the open and we do it to the benefit of the town. So, that was, you know, that's all the remarks.
I could actually give you a, Mr. Chairman, I can actually give you a little piece of advice because I send out the emails with the event schedule. If you want public to show up at your meetings, let me know you're having a meeting. I'd be happy to send out an email and let everybody know, okay?
Well, we'll try and do a better job of that. Thank you very much.
The other thing we can do is if, probably at some point in the future, just like we do with the Open Space, we can invite your committee to come and kind of make a presentation about what you're looking at, what you're doing.
Yeah.
And a lot of times, because it's part of this meeting, we'll get, we might get more participation.
Yes, thank you very much.
So, we'll be in touch about it.
And what I'm going to suggest is that you just give Brett the information about you're looking for input from the public on the following. And just fill that in and Brett can put that on the site too.
Absolutely.
No, I appreciate that and we'll get that information out. We have done surveys in the past and they are, they probably, those surveys probably dovetail very, very much so with what you just heard from the Open Space Committee.
And we can announce it, we can announce it also at our meetings.
Yes. It is my goal that our activities be a lot more visible than maybe they have been.
Two other quick suggestions while you're here. One suggestion would be having consistent meetings. Your meetings are as posted, so it's tough for people to know when you're meeting because you're not meeting at the same date and time every month. And the other thing would be not having your meetings at 10:30 on a random Tuesday morning while everybody's working.
I, yeah.
And I know it's about your schedule, I understand.
No, no, it's not about my schedule. I didn't pick the time or place for the meeting. I'd say my schedule's flexible, so we are accommodating other members of the commission.
Of course.
And so, but we'll, but all good advice. I'll try and set the pace for that going forward.
Who's the chair here?
Tim Reins, Chairman Timothy Reins.
At the moment.
Yeah, okay, okay, okay.
I won't say any more about that.
Yep, okay.
But thank you for giving me the moment.
You're welcome, sir. Thank you, Mr. Rosa.
Okay. I'd also like to entertain a motion to move the 6B request for the use of the field.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we take next Agenda Item 6B.
Second.
Can I say aye?
Aye.
Don, I'm not going to try your last name.
Pleasure to meet you, sir.
Firstly, thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here. My name is actually Don Silva.
Okay.
My native name is Anna Dukiki. I am Chipewa from Susie Marie, Michigan, private capital with tribal Chipewas. And I've been down here since 1975.
Are you a resident of Dayton or?
No, I'm not. I'm a former resident. I used to live on Smith Street.
Oh, me too.
With my brother Brian, so, I know him. So, what would you like me to do?
Just give us your, your request. Tell us what you, what you want to do and when you want to do and all that.
Okay, it's kind of a little story I like to go along with it. I'm a former member of the Dayton Indian Council.
Of the Intertribal Council?
Yeah, the Intertribal Council. And when I first joined, I met Leman Adams.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
He's from the same tribe, which I didn't know at the time. And he took me under his arm and he showed me how to set up powwows and be part of the council and part of the Indian community. He had a powwow, his, well, the council he belonged to had a powwow. And it's probably, was probably close to 30 years before it stopped. It's been about three, four years since there have been any powwows back. I'm part of the Red Road for Native Americans and Recovery. We used to have a powwow back also and that lasted 14 years. We had some problems on the Dayton, the tribal council wanted to add a third powwow and that was too much, too much, so we decided to move now that there's no powwow back. The field is really a nice field, but it's flat, you have opportunities, electricity. Our request is we would like to hold powwow Father's Day weekend, I can't remember the dates.
15th, 16th, and 17th?
Yeah, June.
So, that's Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
June 15th, 16th, and 17th?
Yeah, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Friday to set up and then the weekend for the powwow. We have an opportunity, not only to honor the gift of sobriety, but to teach people about the Native American community and our culture.
Absolutely. So, we'll, we'll take a vote here in a minute. I just, you know, there was some issues in the past about with the powwow there. So, I think what, what we've talked, Serenstein and I have talked about, is if we grant this, we'll, we'll give you a letter, if you will, about things you can do and things you can't do. So, we all are on the same page of what the expectation is, so there's no confusion. So, anyway, any further questions for?
Yeah, we've got to do more than the Board of Selectment. I was on the board when the problems arose. We used to be the Board of Health also. So, we've got to get the Board of Health involved in this because they will have a say about the permitting. If you're going to have outside vendors or food that's going to be available to the public, that's Board of Health and there is permitting. One of the things that was a problem the last time was that some of the people that attended the powwow, I'm not sure if it was a powwow or exactly what it was, but the last event that was held here, we had people that came in, in the campers, the, you know, the kind you tow or the pickup truck campers. They hooked up to town water and electricity without any knowledge, without any permission. And one of the campers was a huge unit and that was parked right up, up here. And the hoses were going across the road, the extension plugged into this building was going across the road. And as it turned out, the only permission to use electricity was for the PA system.
Right.
But, again, campers were hooked up, so, so those have to be addressed. There were Board of Health violations as far as sanitation goes and I'll leave it at that. But the units that come must be self-contained, meaning sanitation, phosseptic, so the campus must contain the storage tanks, I think is what they are. No units would be allowed that don't have some kind of sanitation unless it's parked right next to somebody who's got sanitation because the town buildings are locked, you know, there's nothing. The only other alternative is if they were putting, bringing portage on.
Yeah, that's one of the things.
And, you know, that, so that would have to be dealt with. I'm not opposed to it. I know it was a very enjoyable event up until the one we had when there was a problem, but as it was explained to us, there were individuals that came to the event that weren't really part of the, I'll say, original group, that had been doing it for a number of years and that's where some of the problems came from. So, Mr. Chairman, what I would do is make a motion that Mr. Silver get in touch with the Board of Health, Tom Pius, discuss everything, give you tentative approval for these dates and then the Board of Health gets back to us, gives us their final recommendation and it should be okay because it's really those regulations that caused the problems the last time.
I understand, may I just say something?
Sure, of course.
I had left the council because of the people that were, they had mentioned. I had left the council back in 2013 and I heard about the problems at that powwow. We usually check to make sure vendors are not plugging into electricity. We ask permission for things, we don't just, you know, change on our own and just.
That was the first one. The one previous, there had been another problem with sewage disposal. And so, when this one came because of that one and the way conditions were left on the far side of the field, we had the Board of Health and the Building Commission actually do an inspection and that's when more problems, sanitation were found. So, that's why, that's why I made the motion I did because the Board of Health has to be involved. And so, again, we would give you conditional, my motion would be to have you contact the Board of Health, give you conditional approval from this board for those dates contingent upon a recommendation from the Board of Health, which means we would take a second vote and then if there were no problems and everything they need, you're willing to do, then personally, I don't have a problem with it.
Maybe at that time, we'd have, we'd also have a letter that would be clear about what the expectations are, so.
That was our powwow that, that happened. I talked to Tom from the Highway Department that shortly after that and he said he saw it. But I was there until 8 o'clock that night and I didn't see anything. But, you know, things do happen and purposely, I think that was done.
Well, and as I said, without going into details, you know what I'm talking about and we were not aware that there were, I'll call them outsiders, because when it was just a regular group, there weren't problems, but as you said, there were some others that came in and there were problems, so. But, but, but I think, you know, I think that, that everything can be worked out.
Okay.
Oh, Parks and Rec, the dates, have you checked with Parks and Rec for the dates?
No, I just submitted that letter. I wasn't sure, I know a lot of things had changed.
So, why don't we, why don't we make the motion that they, that they go to Board of Selectment and Park and Rec?
Board of Health.
Board of Health.
Board of Health. Park and Rec, we'll wait for their recommendations and we'll have a second.
Okay, Karen, so we'll, we'll give a, instead of, let me think, I'll withdraw that motion. Mr. Chairman, I move that Mr. Silver be advised to contact the Parks and Rec Department to verify the dates and the Board of Health to verify the requirements for use of the field on June 15, 16, 17 for a powwow. And that we will take this under advisement tonight until we have information and this will be a future Agenda Item. We'll possibly, if we can get it done by next week, we'll have it on the agenda for then.
Okay, great.
So, that, but that means you've got to get in touch with those two boards, okay?
I'll do that. And all the rules, I would, if it's approved, I would get that from the Park and Recreation.
Parks and Rec will give you the date verification. Board of Health will give you everything else you need.
Okay.
Food, if there's food, sanitation, everything.
It doesn't have to be done by next week, but I mean, as soon as you get it done, we can.
Yeah, it's good for get it out, you get the work out.
For planning and stuff.
If you're, if you're going to, if you have the opportunity to meet and we can get those recommendations, it can be next week, if not, we'll defer it to the following week.
Okay, great.
Okay? All right.
Take your free time.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Can I say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
It's a pleasure meeting you, Mr. Silva.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
I have to go to work.
Okay. We have a public hearing at 8 o'clock, so.
Anything we can get done?
Yeah, let's, let's jump down to.
What about this?
That's what I'm talking about, yeah. We'll, we'll come back to the, we'll go down to 5A, let her in.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to move to Old Business, Agenda Item 5A, out of order.
Second.
Can I say aye?
Aye.
Sorry, Karen.
Let me find. Okay. We have a letter here. What the, this is, this is in regard to House Bill 3528, an act promoting the proper disposal of miniatures. We're talking about nip bottles. And the, I don't have the whole bill here, but the, the bill essentially puts a $5 deposit.
Five cents.
Five dollars, oh my God. Whole neighborhood is thoughtless.
Five cents.
We'd have people quitting their jobs.
Five cent deposit on those nip bottles because if anybody's been around walking the streets, they're all over the place. So, anyways, so, we have this letter here. It's addressed to Senator, Representative Haddad and Senator Pacico and it reads as follows, "Please allow us this opportunity to express our support for House Bill 3528, reference the vote. Currently, this legislation is before the Joint Committee on Telecommunications, Utilities, and Energy. We urge you to support this legislation as an effective means to lessen curbside trash and litter. While people will always litter, this bill will incentivize others to collect miniatures and redeem them, effectively picking up trash along our streets. Passage of this bill also, this bill also supports recycling efforts and encourages a cleaner environment. By voting yes, you will join a long list of supporters across the Commonwealth and make quite an impact on the local communities in your district. We hope you'll vote in favor of this legislation once it comes before the full legislature and it will be signed by the three of us." So.
Entertaining motions?
Yes. We'll make the other's motion and then we'll take input.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve and sign the letter and send it to the Honorable Patricia A. Haddad, our state representative, and the Honorable Mark Pacico, our state senator.
Second.
Any further discussion or if anybody has any input from?
I just want to tell you, I've been going to the train station the last couple of days. What surprised me was the construction up there has stopped, they're making it handicapped accessible. This morning, I'm waiting for the train, I'm walking around counting the number of bottles that are in the construction site. That's kind of scary. And yet, when I was on the streets of Austin today, I didn't see it.
Well, they sweep them up every night, that's why.
But what bothered me was that the number of nip bottles inside the fenced construction area, even in the wheelbarrow.
Okay. Can I say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, great.
And thank you for bringing this to our attention, so I appreciate it.
Would you, when that goes out, would you send a copy to Victoria Scalfani at MMA? She's, she's the liaison for our committee, just so they know that our board is supporting that.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, the next order of business, we have a public hearing at 8 o'clock and I think it's 8 o'clock on the installation of poles on Wellington Street and Horton Street. Let me find the stuff here. Stuff in this package. There we go.
I remember this package. I had it all shipped out.
That's the one.
Here it is, right here.
Yep.
All right, I'm ready to go.
You're good?
Yep, right here. Just flip it so we don't lose anything.
Okay, so, there's some, somebody here for that because we never have this kind of a room. So, mass select.
I remember this package. I had it all shipped up.
That's the one.
Here it is, right here.
Yep.
All right, I'm ready to go.
You're good?
Yep, right here. Just flip it so we don't lose anything.
Okay, so, there's some, somebody here for that, because we never have this kind of a room. So Mass Electric Company and Verizon are proposing to put some, some poles, 14 new joint-owned poles on Wellington Street, the purpose of which is to reduce the span that the wires have to, have to go. So what the, it says, "They request permission to erect and maintain poles' wires to be placed thereon, together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as said companies may deem necessary to be owned and used in common by the petitioners in the following way or ways." Wellington Street, 14 new joint-owned poles. And if anybody wants to see where they're going to put them.
Is there anyone here tonight representing either National Grid or?
Oh, there you go.
Come to the front. We were going to let you just sit there.
First of all, my name is John Doherty. I'm the distribution design engineer for several towns on Somerset, including the town of Dyke.
Okay.
Okay? You have a couple of different petitions in front of you, I believe.
Yep.
I'll probably start with the easiest one, if you don't mind.
Sure.
That's the installation of a new stub pole on Horton Street. Do you have that one?
Yeah.
Pole 67-84.
Yep, got it right here.
Okay. Basically, the purpose of this pole is to hold up pole 57 on Oak Street, okay? Because we have a, I believe, a single-phase primary conductor going down that road. Without this stub pole, pole 57 will fall in the direction of which way the wire is going, which will be basically toward the road, okay? So what we'll do is we'll put the stub pole in, along with a guy wire, and an anchor and a guy that will hold up pole 57.
So it goes across the street?
Goes across the street, yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's the easiest request we have right now.
Does anybody have any questions about that? Okay?
Okay, now, in regards to Wellington Street, it seems like an awful lot of poles, all right? Let me explain why, okay? Recently, last couple of years, Wellington Street's been without power more often than not, okay? Smallest branch, bird, squirrel, anything that take out the fuses down on Williams Street, and it takes out the entire street of Wellington, okay? What we want to do is, it's very thin conductor out there, very thin wire, okay? So what we want to do is, it's open wire as well. So we want to replace all that wire with what we call three, three-phase spacer wire, which is pretty much, in layman's terms, a bunch of wire together, so it's not all spread out. It's covered, it's insulated, okay? So basically, if a branch falls, it'll bounce off the wire as opposed to hitting it and blowing the fuses.
Okay.
All right? It's a much bigger wire, so with that bigger wire comes more weight, okay? Right now, you've got 200, 250-foot spans out there. That won't work with this, you know, the weight of this wire, okay? Basically, the poles will collapse. So we need to install what we call intermediate poles, which happen to be the 14 of them, all right, to prevent these, these poles from snapping to the weight of the wire. That's why we're requesting that.
It looks like you're putting almost one between every pole that's out there now.
Basically, yeah, because it spans out there, because the wire is so thin right now, it's not that heavy.
Right.
So you could go with a longer span, this wire, this wire is much, much heavier.
Okay.
Okay? Which is why we're requesting these poles.
Is that extra strength also in case of, like, snow and ice storms where it sticks?
Oh, yeah, it's much stronger, much stronger, yeah.
So you expect?
And the crossarms that the wire sits on now, those will be gone, so the wood won't rot and crack. Basically, it'll be like a metal bracket holding this wire up as opposed to a crossarm.
Is that what we have on Center Street? The armpits that have got replaced?
Yes, exactly what you have on Center Street.
Anybody have any comment about that?
So you're expecting all these installations will reduce the amount of power outage over there?
A great deal, actually, yeah.
Okay.
A great deal, unless it's a major event.
Is that the only place in town where you have this problem?
We're also doing work on Cedar Street, I believe.
I think we approved that one a while back. Okay, and Wellington Street, now, three, three new poles?
The three poles, that was a joint-owned pole. Those three poles are going underneath the transmission line, basically, here. It's the same, it's the same situation, okay? And we have to put some smaller poles because they go underneath our transmission line. We need to keep a certain amount of clearance over there.
Yep.
They go into that high, the high-tension lines that, oh, okay, right.
Yeah, if you haven't noticed, we have the poles up about 45 feet, but as you come to the high tension, we have to dip down another five to 10 feet, you know, keep our clearance.
Okay. Any other questions?
Public?
Is there anybody here that lives in the neighborhood that's got a question?
Well, I'm from the Cemetery Commission.
Do you, do you mind just introducing, I know, just introducing myself.
I have a question, and I think from the Cemetery Commission, and we've got a registered letter, and I just wanted to know how the cemetery was affected.
That would be this one. The high-tension lines come through, and then there's the cemetery, and there's the West Dyken Church.
That's the stub pole one?
No, that, that's the three, isn't it?
It's this one, yeah, it's this one, because he's.
Oh, that's, that's, that's the.
Down on Horton Street?
Yeah. That.
All I know is that I got registered, nailed up here.
Oh, okay.
No, no, it's this one. It's this one.
It's under the high-tension.
Because there's Horton Street, there's the church, and the cemetery's behind it, and then there's the high-tension lines right here.
Okay, well, cemetery shouldn't be affected at all, because this is all on the side of the street.
Okay.
And any anchor and guy wires, they won't go on the cemetery property, that we may not hold a property.
Okay.
Yeah, it shouldn't be affected at all.
I just had to ask.
Yeah, okay.
Due diligence, Mr. Shandervan.
Yeah, but I didn't see the plan, so.
I don't have any more questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
I don't think, there was no motion.
Do you have any motion?
No. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the request of National Grid, Tlash, Verizon, Mass Electric, a lot of companies here.
With one, three.
To allow them to install the new poles and the, what did you call this one?
Stub pole.
Stub pole, as presented in the various drawings.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, Karen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Doherty, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there other people here about a specific agenda item? If this, so what are they?
These two are here for emergency preparedness.
Yep.
In the emergency preparedness.
Okay, we'll do it. Which one?
It's public input.
Oh, just public input?
If you don't mind identifying yourself.
Dr. Melo, 316 Tremont Street. Yesterday, I came home, and there is, are new signs on Tremont Street that have been installed, and there are, there is two stop signs now at the end of the street, one on either side of the street, and two signs showing that there's going to be a stop sign on either side of the street. And the one on the left-hand side is actually kind of dangerous. Aside from being in the middle of my lawn, when you're coming from the other direction, it's, it's gray. So you're coming from up the street heading towards Williams, the sign is back too, because it's intended for the people coming in the other lane in the other direction.
Mm-hmm.
That is a good point.
Well, we'll.
It's actually an agenda item.
It is? I didn't see it on there.
It's under Town Administrative Report.
Okay.
Which is fine, but just for clarification, you mentioned this is in the middle of your lawn, this is on your property, you're telling me?
It's in, well, it's in front of my house, probably.
It's in the easement.
It's in the easement, but it's in the, in the middle of the front of my house, where the other signs are all on the property lines. This is in the middle of the front of my house.
And your sign is, this sign in question is the stop ahead sign, or the actual stop?
Yes, the stop ahead that is.
Sure.
On the side of the road, facing backwards from oncoming traffic.
We can have, we can have Highway Superintendent take a look at that, and maybe put some reflectors on the back of it.
I mean, it's honestly kind of dangerous when you're coming from the other direction, and it's backwards and gray at night.
If you want to stay for a little bit, we're going to be talking about.
Okay.
But that's very, that's very valuable, we appreciate it.
I just had one question. So your house is on the corner of Tremont and Old?
My house is five houses up on the right-hand side.
Gotcha.
Old Somerset on Tremont.
With the alpacas.
Yes!
Okay, gee, we're jumping around here, but what the heck.
We can start regular now.
Well, let's, I don't want to keep these guys here either.
Sorry.
So, let me find you on here.
They're F, 5F.
5F.
Um, Mr.
5F? Yeah, 5F.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we take Agenda Item 5AF, next.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Remember 4F back in the Vietnam days?
Think you're the only one.
4F, 4F was a deferred category.
No, 4H.
We know that one.
Mr. Pires, if you ever want to come up here and speak to us.
We, we had to speak to the item, but if you would like to begin discussion already, you're just going to point yourself to me, right? I don't really know what the point, at this point.
So, just to fill you in, so I was sick last week, I apologize. So this item was deferred to this week, and I appreciate you guys doing that, you didn't need to. I watched the meeting, I heard what the original plan was, I heard my colleagues' suggestions to have a member of the Board of Selectmen on the committee. My personal opinion is, I'm okay with the committee that the Town Administrator worked out with you guys. I didn't have any changes to make, I was okay with having you be a voting member, and then reporting back to the Board of Selectmen if you need to.
I would be a non-voting.
Okay, well, I was also okay with you being a voting member as well. So that's my two cents on it.
The discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We were just basically here to support.
Yep, the recommendation.
And we discussed why certain people should be on the committee, so.
I could speak to it for a little bit. We, we discussed it, I don't know, with the last week, I suppose, and.
It's all a blur. Life moves really fast here.
Doesn't really make any difference. And after, actually, a lot of discussion in who would be the best people on the committee without having 19 people, I guess is what we started with, we wouldn't probably ever get anything done, because everybody, you know, would be part of the decision-making process. So we nailed it down to five people, and we thought about adding others, such as the Animal Control Officer, or the Building Commissioner, or various people. And we felt if there was an item that we were going to speak about, we would have that particular person come to the meeting.
Absolutely.
And that way, that we could focus on that particular item, if it was germane to the Animal Control Officer, Building Inspector, Board of Selectmen, or whatever. The opinion we have from our Coalition Coordinator, Denny Panouf, is that it's not really a good idea to have an elected official on the, on the committee.
Okay.
Because of, you know, the turnover, perhaps. I mean, certainly, if there's a time where we need, we're looking for input from the Board of Selectmen, I think you ought to choose, as a Board of Selectmen, a representative to represent the board when we, you know, but as far as a voting member, we're trying to keep politics out of it, to be honest with you.
Politics absolutely should be. My, my feeling is that, you know, the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, not necessarily me, but whoever the Chair is, should, should be a part of that, just to be aware of what preparations or what discussions are taking place. I think they should be a voting member as a, as a senior official in town.
You could, nothing would preclude you from coming to meetings.
Correct, yeah.
Who are the five? Fire Chief, Police Chief?
Myself.
Chairman of Board of Health.
E W.
Highway Superintendent.
And I, I think that, I just wanted to say, again, I watched the meeting, I heard the original recommendation, that's the recommendation that I'm going to go with tonight, okay?
Well, I feel pretty strongly about it.
My concern.
And it's not, we haven't voted yet, so hold your breath.
We don't even have a motion yet. My concern was that the elected official leaders of the towns, the Board of Selectmen, so I think the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen should be a voting member. I think the other two members of the Board of Selectmen need to be, whether you call them ad hoc or something, because in a real emergency, people are going to look to the Board of Selectmen. Now, bless you, if you, if you watch what happens when something's happening at the state level, and they go out to the bunker in Framingham, whoever the director of whatever it is, MIMR or somebody, that person is talking, but who is the elected official that always steps up? It's the governor, because if there's money involved, the governor's right there saying they got to do this, this, and this. So I'm looking at the governor, I'm looking at the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. So, yeah, I, you know, don't name the name, name the positions. Fire Chief, Police Chief, whatever.
And I don't think there's any doubt, the Board, the Chairman of the Board doesn't necessarily have any expertise on what you're doing, but it just being a part of it is, I think, is very important.
Well, we would still be a part of it, because we have, we have an arm.
We're going to, Board of Selectmen will be integral probably in the Incident Command structure.
Correct.
Exactly.
Everybody reports to the Incident Commander, it doesn't matter who you are. As far as this committee is concerned, my feeling is, the less, the better, I think we'll get more done.
Let's not talk about that comment.
So, you're on a, you're on a call-down list, you're part of the Incident Command structure, for informational purposes, as I said, you're always welcome to come to You know, or when there comes a time where you feel you want to add something, you come to a meeting.
But I don't, but I see, I guess, I guess my concern is, it's not really a concern, but I just think being, like I said, the senior person, like a mayor or whatever, the Chairman, don't, I mean, I don't, if I was going to be part of this, I don't want to find out how the whole thing is working when the emergency pops up. I want to know how things are working, I want to be part of that.
Well, we're sharing information. This committee is to make policy and recommendations.
You just spoke. Why are you the only one that gets to say?
You know, so.
Selectmen's are graphos.
Anyway, I'm going to leave it at that, I'm going to let you vote.
I'll recognize you when you need to.
My point is, in a real emergency, aren't you going to get a call?
That's my whole point.
Correct.
Don't be angry, let's just have a reasonable discussion.
And she, I'm not angry, but she will be filling us in, you're not going to just show up to us.
No, 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 you must have missed part of the meeting last week, because my, Mallory is a non-vot, Mrs. Ehrenstein is a non-voting member, I have no problem with that at all, except if we have a large-spread emergency, whether it's a hurricane, a tornado, or whatever. She is not a resident of town, she could be unable to get here, therefore, there's got to be a direct link in her absence with the Board of Selectmen. That's the only reason I'm saying that if the Chairman is a member. And we, we don't have to sit in on every policy, when I say week, I'm referring to us as the ad hoc members. We don't have to sit in on all the policy things and all the stuff you're putting in We don't have to sit in on all the policy things and all the stuff you're putting in place. But if that thing, that disaster happens, we're going to know what's going to happen. We know, this is what the five or the six, this is what's going to happen. This is what the role of the Selectmen are, the Chairman and then the other two members. Who's the, we talked about the Information Officer, there's going to be one person that gives out information to the public and the press, and you're going to decide who that is. By the same token, as the Selectmen, if an emergency happens, I don't want to stand around and say, "What's happening? What are we doing?"
Exactly. That exact, oh, I'm sorry. That exact concern came up and was discussed, and this committee isn't like the response team to an emergency, because you're right, I don't know, if we had a mega-disaster, I'm sure I would experience that same mega-disaster in my community. What if the road's out? I wouldn't even be able, I don't have a helicopter, I can't. So, that was exactly discussed. What I envision this committee doing is, they're going to identify different disasters and have appropriate cooldown lists for each disaster. And once that's decided, then it's kind of like that EDS drill on a smaller scale, where, okay, if we've got this disaster, you're on the list and you're going to need to know. And it's to keep you all apprised of what's going on, but not be bogged down by actually planning it out.
Can I ask you a question? So, was the whole, because I wasn't privy to like the actual conversation. Was the whole point of having you be present in on those meetings to report back to the Board on what? So, I don't understand what we're even arguing about. Are we, we're all going to show up to the disaster, and we're all going to be informed on what the committee's doing to prepare?
You will have had your role designated to you, you know, previous, this committee, and I don't know how else to explain it, that this committee is not like, you know, a group of superheroes.
The Disaster Response Committee, correct.
They're not going to respond, you'll all respond, everybody responds.
The command person is the Fire Chief, right?
Making a policy about how the town is...
Incident Commander.
The Command Chief is the, the Command Person is the Fire Chief.
EIO is Chief, please.
Okay.
So, what I envision this committee doing is, we have this drill, and we need more signs. So, this committee decides on the signs. We need a new tire on the trailer. We need to make sure everybody in Town Hall has ICS training, and we have to coordinate with Selectmen or Town Court, whatever, and we have, these are the kind of things we're doing. It's the day-to-day thing, just working out the maps for Town Hall, figuring out whose jobs are who, what the cooldown list is, et cetera. But, right, the Selectmen are going to get a call when it happens, just like Mallory and everybody else on the list, and be told, "Show up," and you'll be assigned to duties when you get there.
And we already know what the plan is, because she would have reported to us to let us know what the committee had discussed. Oh, of course.
I know, I guess my point is, I don't disagree with that at all, but I don't want to, I don't want to be involved in it at the point when it's all happening, I don't know, I don't know. I know that, but if, okay, but the Selectmen, we're not invited to the last drill either, I have a hard time with that. But I just think that the Chairman of the Board ought to be on this committee to have input and also to have, you know, knowledge about what's going on. It's not to disrupt the committee, and I agree, we don't want a lot of people on it, but I just think...
So, what is the difference?
Let me finish. The senior elected official in town, I think, like a mayor, or like a, should be, you know, should be involved in this committee.
What is the difference? What is the difference between you going and voting, or not voting, right? Now, you're on the committee, but you can't vote, or just going into the room and observing what the committee's discussing.
Because I think it's, I think it should be a voting member.
Well, then, if you become a voting member, you need another voting member, because you want an odd number.
I just feel like it should be experts in emergency preparedness.
There was, there was talk about, of Mr. Agia.
He talked about several different...
That would give the, that would give you an odd number, if the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen and the Building Commissioner, and we only use titles, not names, because anything can change. As a Selectman, I truly believe that the Leadership Board in the town, duly elected, should have a member on that committee. My main concern, as a member of the Board of Selectmen, like if something happened right now, and you said your role is, I'd say, "What?" Because I haven't, since I came back, first of all, when I was on from seven to 10, this was all kind of handled by the Fire Chief, and quite frankly, if there was a disaster, I would have showed up and said, "What am I supposed to do?" I can tell you, since I came back in 2015, I haven't been involved with any practices. I missed the NIMS training by like a month or so, because I came on in September and they had held... I haven't even had the defibrillator training, which I realize is different. But my feeling is, right now, there should be somebody that is on your, on that committee. But also, when the committee meets, there should be directives coming out, like, this is the list of people. If this happens, here's the list, and I'm on that list, I'm going to have something in writing that says, "If you get the call, this is what you're going to have to do, this is what your role is going to be." That's what my concern is.
But my question...
That's the Incident Commander. They all report and go to their assignments.
I guess my question is, what's the objection they have in the Chairman's Board part of the committee?
It's just the turnover and the training that's involved, probably, with the...
And the recommendations of the...
Well, honestly, my point of view, I wanted to be a working committee and didn't want to get dragged into the politics and that kind of stuff. I wanted to be functional, so, that was not, that's my personal objection, so.
I'm not looking for another meeting and another committee, but I want to, but what I'm looking for is, what am I supposed to do, what is my role?
But I think, I don't think we, see, I don't think we need to be a member of it in order for that to happen.
Right, that has nothing to do with that, like, you know, Karen's going to have a job, Mallory's going to have a job too, and they don't, right now, know what that job is, because the committee has to work out the roles and talk to people, find out who your backups are for every position. There's a lot of work to be done.
Exactly.
I don't see it as interfering with what you're doing, I think, I see it as supplementing or contributing to what we're doing, not...
What would you be contributing, though, Mr. Chairman? Did you do your NIMS training? I did my NIMS training.
Look, okay, listen, let's talk about this, let's not editorialize every single...
I'm not editorializing.
Until I recognize, until I recognize, okay? Let me finish my question to these guys.
Okay.
So, so I don't, it wouldn't be to interfere or whatever, it would just be to provide input as, you know, and to be involved in it, that's all. I just, I don't think, I don't see how the senior elected officials in a, in a community cannot be part of it, that's my, that's my concern.
Well, it's a part of the position, and so we felt, and we felt...
Anybody can attend a meeting and give input.
Selectmen goes a graphus.
No, no, I mean, I already said what I said, what, I'll just ask your question a different way. What, why can't we just accept the recommendation of the people that already worked it out and made the recommendation? I'll go to the meeting if I want to, and I'll take the reports that Town Administrator Ehrenstein gives us.
Can I answer the question?
When I finish speaking, sure.
Because as I've said, I don't want to keep repeating myself.
Well, you just keep saying the senior elected official, I don't think that means anyone to anyone watching.
As a senior elected official, I've said it, I've said it, I don't want to keep repeating myself, that's how I feel about it, I think this Board, the Chairman of the Board should be on the committee.
Well, you guys, the motion and vote, so, we just wanted to give you our...
And that's good, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate where you're coming from. Mr. Borg.
Yes.
I just wanted to share, I don't want to be out of line. The question, I was here, it's easy to read.
Yeah, go ahead, what's your question?
The question is this, I was here last week, and I, what I got out of it was, not all of what we're talking about, but are there any, as far as FEMA, MEMA, your regulations? Remember, we talked about continuity of government, I don't think it was, I think it was just some... You want, you're trying to maintain the continuity in a disaster. I think you want to maintain similar to the federal...
I'm not necessarily, I just, I just think the, as I said, the leaders of the town should just be involved in that, that's all, that's all I think, as a voting member. Well, what did you want to call it? Did you have a comment? Oh, okay. Anybody else? Anything else?
I just wanted to, I understand what the recommendation is from the discussion that was had. So, what are you proposing? Because that's a little unclear, is it going to be non-member, is it going to be, I mean, voting, non-voting?
My proposal is that the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen be a voting member on the Emergency Preparedness Committee. Anything else you want to say?
You said you talked about other people, and we, I mentioned the Building Commissioner. Who else, if the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen is a member, who else would there be that you would consider, other than the Building Commissioner? Because if it's a, if it's a storm-type thing, you're going to need him anyhow, like what tornado, whatever.
He was actually floated, that position, because of, when a disaster strikes, obviously, structural integrity comes into question. So, he was actually touted to be joining this position.
But they're not a dominant person like you. So, what would be the point?
My, my recommendation, if you go with adding the Chairman of the Board, I believe you do need another member for an odd number, and my recommendation would be the Building Inspector, but that's a secondary recommendation to add him.
I would, I would leave you guys with their recommendation. I kind of agree with Mallory, but I don't think that's what we're here for today.
I mean, the several people that we had floated around, the Town Nurse being one, the Communications Group, all the principals. The Principals of the Schools, the Superintendent, that's why the committee was at nineteen before, is because all these people are possible people to weigh in. But we narrowed it down to what we felt was a good, clean, working core group to get things done. But yes, we, there's plenty of names that we can float out there.
I agree with you, nineteen's crazy. Okay, we done discussing, or?
I don't think you need three Selectmen, but I strongly say you've got to have a member of the Board of Selectmen, because it's the chief elected Board. And when people look for leadership, they're going to say, "How come the Selectmen aren't involved in a disaster?" Just like, I'm sure the Governor doesn't do all that stuff, but let's face it, whether it's a disaster or whatever, you'll see him with the emergency people.
So, I will entertain, I will entertain a motion, if you'd like to make one.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that, oh, wait a minute, did we, have we appointed the committee yet? We've got two motions, there's two motions involved.
You had deferred the whole discussion to...
We got to appoint the members, and then we got to make that committee a Subcommittee of the Board of Health.
Yeah, my memo kind of goes in the water of that.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So, you'd make it a Subcommittee, or appoint them and then make it a Subcommittee.
So, let's do that first one first.
To make it a Subcommittee?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to make the Emergency Preparedness Committee a Subcommittee of the Board of Health.
Second.
Do you for the discussion? Okay, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
The next paragraph you can skip, that just says the Fire Chief's going to be the Chairman, because he's the Incident Commander, anyway. And then, the last bit is where everybody's listed, the last paragraph, and you would just add.
Okay, I'll just get to that. I'm looking at the agenda, did we have two agenda items last week, or just one?
I thought it was one from my memory.
The thing that was underneath it was to make it a Subcommittee.
This is it, we had last week, we talked about, so this is the motion.
So, it went, it went update and then establish it as Subcommittee, was the last.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint the following positions to the Emergency Preparedness Committee. Fire Chief, the Police Chief, the Chairman of the Board of Health, the Health Agent, the Superintendent of Streets, the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, and the Building Commissioner.
I'll step down a second.
Discussion?
Discussion.
I just, I'm not, I'm voting, I'm not, I'm going to vote no, simply because I don't agree that the Chairman of the Board should be on the committee.
Under discussion?
I have a discussion, is the, am I on it as a liaison?
And, and, and the Town Administrator as a non-voting liaison to the Board of Selectmen.
Just for information, we briefly discuss it. That's a good choice. Jim Agia for the seventh member.
And I just solved the other problem.
Want to add that?
I just, I did, Jim's on there. I just solved the other problem by looking at this. This is a Subcommittee of the Board of Health. Even though the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen will serve on this committee, it's a Subcommittee of the Board of Health. The Board of Health is calling the shots.
Wait, this is all the incoming to the Department of Health, so...
It meets the criteria of the Board of Health, Public, Department of Public Health. It meets the criteria for an emergency committee, just like the Stormwater Committee. If we're going in the wrong direction, you're going to tell us.
So, why don't, so why don't we take a vote? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, guys.
Give a bit of excitement.
Okay, so where?
I have no idea where we are.
Can we go back to four A?
Four A.
We've already been at this an hour, so this is a long meeting.
Do you want to know anything about our Planning Board recommendation?
Do that one, then.
What do we got on the agenda here for, geez, yeah, why don't we, where the heck is that?
Five B.
We have a letter, that's five, five B, there was a letter, I won't steal your thunder there, but we do have some documentation.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we take Agenda Item 5B out of order. So, that's next.
Okay.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, I'll read this, but then you can expound if you would. Yeah, this is addressed to the Honorable Selectmen. Planning Board met on February 26 to discuss the final five applications for the Planning Board Office Manager to recommend a successful application to your Board. It is a great pleasure to recommend Ms. Carrie Easterday be appointed as a position of Office Manager, dated Planning Board effective March 12, 2018. You want to say anymore?
Of the seventeen applications, we narrowed it down to five, and after reviewing the, a couple of, two were very close, we went with the one that had more seniority and was familiar with the Town of Dayton, which we felt was a better choice. The, she had more, this individual that was recommended has approximately ten years or so in municipal government, and the other one was very, the runner-up was very close. And, but we felt that knowledge of the town also was a plus, and pretty much that was why we recommended this individual, so.
Is your Board recommending where to bring her in at? I know she does have years of service.
No, we have to discuss that soon. I believe the time that she spent in Dayton probably should be included to determine her step coming in, which would probably come in at a step two at that rate, because I think she was, I don't know, I'm not quite sure how many years she had. It was, it was more than five, I think.
So, I guess you're recommending that we give her credit for her time, all the time she's been in the service of government.
Well, I wouldn't say so, and veracly, she worked in the Clerk's Office, which was, you know, unrelated to, although it was a municipal experience. If you want to consider that, that would be wonderful.
This stance has previously been directly related, if the service had been directly related to the role previously.
Okay.
But the Dayton service, for sure, is recognizable.
You mean, in the role in the Clerk's Office in the other town?
I would say would not, because it's not directly related to the Planning Board function.
So, other than that, I'm familiar with the work, I think as other people may be. She did work in the town for a number of years prior to going to Berkeley, so, never had any problems, attendance was good, so, she was a good employee while she was here, so.
May I entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Planning Board to hire Mrs. Carrie Easterday as Planning Board Office Manager, effective March 12, 2018.
And to give her, and to give her credit for...
I'm not, we're not having that discussion separate?
No, that would be part of the...
Okay, and, excuse me, and to give Mrs. Easterday credit for her service as a former Town of Dayton employee.
Second.
Okay, on favor, say aye.
Aye. I just wanted to make one comment. I also think it was a really good idea to get somebody who is familiar with the town. As we know, the previous Planning Board Office Manager was quite familiar with the town, and I think that really helps in terms of servicing the people who need assistance down there, so go work.
And a lot of our residents are already familiar with that. So, I think it would be, I know I spelled her name wrong.
I was just going to, isn't it an I?
Don't tell her that, she's watching.
Yes, it was spelled correctly, Mrs. Easterday.
Yeah, I want, I want also to say, I know, when I worked here with, as a back end agent, Carrie was here, and she does a tremendous job, and she's a wonderful person, she's actually...
She was here when you were there, right?
That's right, yeah, she did a wonderful job.
She was here with, that's how far back it goes.
So, congratulations, Carrie, if you're watching, it's a pleasure to have you back in.
Thank you, Mr. Pyres.
Tom, not, not, I'm not looking for names or anything, but in the number of applications you received, were there many people who were residents of the town that applied?
Well, maybe three, or two, was it? Wasn't a whole, there was two or three.
I'm just wondering if we had some local interests.
Yeah, the, the, four of the five that we chose had municipal experience.
Oh, that's good.
Very, some very little, others had more. But, so you notice, it was kind of a tough decision, and so, but I'll be glad when she gets there.
It's March 12.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right, that's right, sorry, I was thinking about credible service, yep.
It may be a little after that, but...
Mr. Chairman, can we take 4B? I'll make the motions, because we've got somebody sitting here, is that okay? Mr. Chairman, I move that we take Agenda Item 4B, Tremont Street slash Old Somerset Avenue intersection plan next.
Second.
Okay, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Is there anything you wanted to add before I begin? And then there's this letter, yes. You can read it.
I'll read it. February, it's getting late, folks. "February 28, 2018, Town of Dayton Selectmen, I'm unable to attend the meeting tonight, but I wanted to express my concerns on the intersection at Tremont and Old Somerset Avenue. While I was pleased to see the new signs that were installed on Tremont Street yesterday, I can't help but feel more needs to be done. The signs will hopefully help during daytime hours, but unfortunately, most of the accidents that have occurred at the Tremont Street, Old Somerset Avenue intersection have been at night by drunk drivers, who I will add, have mostly all been town residents who knew the road. Signs alone are not going to prevent something from happening again. There needs to be something to catch the driver's attention and slow them down way before the stop sign. A flashing light, lights on the recently-installed signs, reconstruction of the infrastructure on Tremont Street or at the intersection. Of all the accidents that have occurred, the cars are going so fast, they get airborne right before the end of Tremont Street. Not even the guardrails that were installed years ago on Old Somerset Avenue were enough to stop one of the vehicles from taking out the street sign, the guardrails, and flipping completely upside down until it landed back on its wheels facing out of the pool. I don't have the answers, I know that in the past twenty-six years, I have, that I..." have lived at fifty, uh, five hundred nineteen Old Somerset Avenue, I have witnessed my share of accidents in my neighbor's yard, my yard, and two that have landed in my pool. My fear is that one day, something is going to happen to someone who is as innocent as one of my family members, or their friends, or a member of my neighbor's family. Respectfully, Donna Pappas, five nineteen Old Somerset Avenue, North Dayton, Massachusetts.
Okay, thank you. So this landed here because at our last department head meeting, this intersection, um, which I believe they called the worst intersection in Dayton, um, was brought up, and it was suggested, uh, various intersection improvements, and, in my opinion, intersection improvements should always have some sort of engineering going forward, so these signs are, I don't want to say fixed, but a quick fix, a little bit of addressing it. Um, we did not choose, or Tom and I talked about it, and I was unaware of how quickly Mr. Ferry moved, um, I'm surprised that the, I don't know, it was just, I couldn't believe they were up already, so, uh, here they are, and we're just trying to see if this makes any sort of difference. We did discuss flashing li, lights, and I thought, because it's a residential area that might become a nuisance, um, however, if the signs are facing backwards and not showing, you know, are, are becoming a danger, I mean, more needs to be done, um, but I do believe that whole intersection should have an engineering study done on it, it's very dangerous.
Can I just make a comment on the last point? I've also seen the flashing, um, stop signs, um, they do have a couple in Somerset, and I believe Swansea as well. My only issue, um, and this is pertaining, this pertains to the letter that I just read, these were Dayton residents, they know to stop there, they know there's a stop sign, and if they're drunk, I, I just feel like having, having a flash, they see the stop sign without the flashing lights, so, I, I just don't think, how much, how effective that could be.
Well, how can you control a drunk driver?
Perhaps, perhaps, as you said, an engineering study, and, and revisit what, what else might be done.
There are sightline issues, um, obviously, there's the resident that is right there.
Yeah.
Um, the idea was floated to do a guardrail across their driveway, personally, I don't, I wouldn't want to lose my horseshoe driveway, so I kind of want to avoid that, um, keeping in mind the other neighbors, I was going away from flashing lights, but I think it's definitely something that should be engineered and looked at for safety.
We could look at it, and then, and then maybe, we'd obviously have to have a discussion with all those people in that area, see what they think about the flashing light, because it, it would disrupt anybody who would be down.
So when, when you do a study like that, they'll then make recommendations based on the findings, and then we can have a discussion based on that, I think that's absolutely appropriate.
Do you know if the state has to get involved at that intersection? That's a Tom Ferry question.
It's a Tom Ferry question, and I feel like the answer is no, but, um.
Because it's not like a state highway right there?
But they still have, they have, they have a lot to say about speed limits and everything.
And he told me that stops, I asked him, and he said that stop signs were okay, we could, we could add these signs without DOT approval, and there was just recently a change in that law, so that's a question I do have to ask, Tom. Um, I will say that the stop sign that was there previous was a four-foot stop sign, that's massive.
It was giant.
Still getting hit, still, and it just wasn't that far over, so that was a thinking, that's why we added the other side and the stop ahead signs, but.
But now, if you're someone who's, I mean, I understand the people that have hit, have, you know, gone through it, are residents, but if you're not a resident and you're coming down there, now you've got two stop signs on opposite sides of the road, this looks like a one-way street, because there's a stop sign on the left corner and the right, and that's even more dangerous than the way it was with just one on the right-hand side.
The one, well, yeah, it's hard to say why, but I, I, my feeling was that you come down there, you're not going to miss the stop sign, and you might miss it on the right, I don't know, because the other thing.
You couldn't see it on the right, I, we try, like, it was this little, as you're approaching, if you're going at a high rate of speed, like a drunk driver probably would be, by the time you see it, I mean, this doesn't solve the problem of people that know the road and they know better, but it's too late, so there were some bushes that were, you know, encroaching on the sign, hiding it a little bit, and we're not about to ask them to cut their bushes so that they don't have any privacy in their yard at the intersection, so we thought this would work, but that's a good point about the other side, so I'll have to drive it now and, and, uh, look on the other side.
I mean, last time I came home, it was dark, there was a new sign that was, I mean, I can show you the picture, halfway up my br, my yard, facing the wrong direction, with no markings on it.
And we'll put markings.
And there's no light there, I'd rather you moved it to the property line at least, so it's not, you know, if I was going to cut, drive onto my lawn, I couldn't get the sign.
But we'll take a look at that.
We'll read some of the sign.
Um, but it would be nice, I mean, I think, I understand, I think the engineering study, how about a police officer on gray terrace on Lincoln Ave to, you know?
I can tell you that police patrols sit literally on gray terraces in full view, you can see them the minute you turn onto Tremont, or if you're going east on Tremont, and there's one particular officer who, when he was on the day shift, just sat there and wrote tickets, because the speed limit changes as you go down the hill if you're going west, all right? But when you're coming east, it also changes coming east, and he's in plain sight, he's not even hiding, and he's just picking them off, writing up the tickets, because they're just speeding, I don't know what it is about that road. My other thought is.
And it's residential.
Is there anything, is, and it's, the speed limit's thirty something.
Yeah, it's insane.
It doesn't go to forty until it drops down and goes west. My other thought was, um, if you're on Forest Street going south, and you're approaching Tremont, I would think, even if you've had too much to drink, your lights will pick up all of those reflectors that are right in front of you, and I'm wondering if more reflectors on those fences would help.
They got them, they got them, they're right across there.
With a black arrow on it, like they have the other.
There's not as many as there are on Forest Street, as a matter of fact, Oak Street onto Horton Street is another place that needs them, because it's dark, and you can't see.
What I, what I, yes, why don't, why don't we, why don't we turn it back to our town administrator and Mr. Ferry?
Yeah.
To talk about the things we talked about, and then come back and report to us what, uh.
Yeah, I just, just for a point of clarification, the reflective yellow signs on the guardrail that, and I thought of an arrow, too.
Yeah, what's, what's at the end of Forest Street is not guardrail reflectors, it's a whole bunch of things stuck in the ground, you know what I mean?
Oh, yeah.
Right, at the, at the other end, when you go onto Williams, as you're coming to it, there's one, one of the new signs, and then there's a stop sign, and directly in front of you is a huge yellow sign with a big black arrow that's.
Yeah, right.
Hey, this is a T here.
Yeah.
That one's a pretty good sign.
Maybe they can look at that, too, okay.
It might be enough, that they would hit the brakes, because you, you can see them from a distance, you know? My concern, and if we have to do an engineering study, my concern is, both of those homes are very, very close to that road, and they both sit high, and I'm not sure, trying to widen the road or do anything.
Well, why don't we just see what they come up with?
It does have its challenges, but.
Because we need to move on, we're.
But thank you, and thank you for your comments.
Thank you for your input, really appreciate that.
Absolutely, thank you for coming to it.
Yeah, because I, you know, I wouldn't have thought of that, but it's a very good point.
Just make note, when we go to have that conversation, we should make an, we should make an attempt to invite everyone in that vicinity who might have an opinion on, um, how to proceed forward, okay?
Okay, um, now we're going to get to the town administrator's report from the beginning, back on track.
Okay, here we go.
Go for it.
One's favorite topic of anti-harassment, okay, so we have put together a, a anti-harassment policy which expands upon the town's current sexual harassment policy, and just includes the various types of harassment that are now protected, um, by law, so this is updating us. Our process here was, we took it, you, you took it in under advisement, we sent it to the unions, we sent it to department heads, and, um, I received back, uh, suggestions and items from the highway union, the fire union, and the library director. So I, um, the other three unions were okay, and they didn't propose any changes. The highway union was fairly simple, and just wanted to remove one of the items on the signature page, uh, this policy has a signature page, so that you have shown to the town that you've read, and you agreed to this policy, and you buy it, um, so there was one item, I actually agreed with that change, it came right from their, uh, union rep, and it made sense, so I agree with that. I'm going to skip fire, because it's involved for a second, the library director wanted us to address bullying, and so I did, as she suggested, in the new, uh, version that you have, it talks about bullying, um, in addition to harassment, and how we are going to be a workplace free of bullying, and I got the, uh, definition of workplace bullying from the Mass Healthy Workplace, which they are initiating legislation currently, going before the state, uh, to prevent workplace bullying and address it, and, uh, so I thought, you know what, maybe she has a point, and we should just be ahead of the curve.
Mm-hmm.
I do believe that the hostile work environment described in the first draft does encompass this, but doesn't hurt to be specific.
So you're okay with both?
I am okay with those.
All right.
Uh, I'm also okay with the fire, but they're a little bit more in-depth, so, uh, Tom Madieres is our union steward, he gave me a very involved, uh, reading of this, and I appreciate that, and he came back, so I have listed these, um, items that he gave, and, uh, told, told you in my report here what my opinion of the change was, so he, the fire union had an issue because the draft required that employees be responsible, and the language was this, share responsibility for avoiding, discouraging, and reporting any form of harassment, and he feared that if somebody failed to report harassment, that they would be subject to discipline, and that's not really the intent of this line, the intent of this line is so that people understand that their own behavior is what they have the responsibility over, so what we did was, um, share responsibility for avoiding and discouraging any form of harassment, and took out reporting, and later said, employees are encouraged to report incidents of harassment to supervisors, um, or to the town administrator, and that kind of takes away that fear a little bit, and it also, um, gives them direction on where to go if they need to report it, and they don't necessarily have to go to their supervisor, they can come right to the town administrator.
Okay.
And go, and I'm okay with that, um.
So you're okay with the proposed changed language?
For this one, yes, I'm, I'm okay with that, we talked about it on the phone, he did send this back out to his members, um, so he's waiting, you know, just to hear back from them, but the two of us worked this out over.
I understand the concern, they just hope people would come forward if they see bullying or they see harassment going on, so we can address it.
Exactly, right, and that's why I called him, he's not saying that they're not going to report any harassment, I think the fear was, well, if I don't realize it's harassment and I didn't report it, am I now subject to discipline?
I understand, I understand.
So I, I understand, so we don't want to set anybody up to be, you know, harmed.
Correct.
By this.
That's not the purpose, okay.
Okay, so the top of page four, uh, which deals with, sorry, I just.
The training?
For training, yes, thank you, so it's the second paragraph now, I just knew it had gotten pushed down. Um, I would defer to the board of selectmen, his concern was whether or not this would be, um, reporting to duty or not, if this is, you know, going to be provided in the workplace.
I don't think that's a fire, that would have to be a board of selectmen decision, that's a fire chief decision.
Exactly, so I, just deferring to, if you want to keep this in the policy or not, or address it in the policy or not.
I think it should be.
I like to keep it how it is, that's my personal opinion, but I'm deferring to.
I think they should be training employees.
How's it read now?
It says, "Training of all employees in the nature of harassment, and training of supervisor, supervisory personnel who are designated to receive and investigate complaints of harassment shall be regularly provided by the town," and that's just us saying that we're going to give you a harassment one-on-one course every once in a while, I mean, we have to schedule that with everybody, people are sometimes going to not be working, we have part-time, we have people on different shifts for our police and fire, so it's just going to be scheduled, and we'll have to just figure that out, but, um, I defer to you.
I think in the case of the fire department, under the strong chief law, that's up to the chief to do. He will, and he may have to have multiple sessions, because if he's doing it by shift and it's on duty, it's, it's not, it takes care of it, that's, that's a fire chief, I think the rest of the town departments, I think we can work that out, and we may have one or two depending upon, but it's only the fire and, uh, communications, fire, and it's only public safety that has twenty-four hours around the clock, so, but I really do, as far as that goes, um, that's the fire chief.
So you could just add a line in there, as, as, wait, I have to think about what the line is, I was going to say, as, as, as approved by the fire chief, but.
Well, not specifically, this is your policy.
I understand, I understand.
Then add a, then add something into that indicates that for departments that work twenty-four seven, it will be the responsibility of the department head to schedule training appropriately, which would be during working hours, I would think.
Let me marinate with that a little bit and figure out the best way to, to work it out, but yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, because it's, the fire, the fire department, no question at all, it's the fire chief, and, um, the other twenty-four seven departments fall under the police, the police department and communications.
So the last one here.
The last one is under the complaint procedure, and this one took me a little bit of time to digest and, and figure out what they were actually saying, so in this, um, I apologize, this, this is not in color, um, but this sheet, this top sheet, the first sentence is something they've proposed to add, um, basically saying that an employ, actually, let me back up, the informal procedure is just, you know, to sit in a meeting with myself, the aggrieved, and the complaint.
Right.
Try to find a resolution. The formal procedure is very similar to a grievance procedure, that would be in our collective bargaining, and that involves the board of selectmen, a meeting posted, forty-eight hours in advance and all of that, um, so he has added this sentence, "An employee against whom a harassment complaint is made may voluntarily participate in the informal procedure." I'm okay with this, I'm okay with it, it is redundant in the sense that later in this paragraph, it says that if you can't reach a resolution in the informal, it kicks up to the formal procedure, but this makes it clear that somebody actually has the opportunity to say, "I'm not sitting down with you."
Does it, does it say that in the original? I'm looking, I'm just.
No, what you're looking at is the amendments, what I have here in tonight's packet.
It doesn't, it doesn't talk about formal, though.
What I have in tonight's packet is this updated with these changes, I've just highlighted the changes for you.
Gotcha, okay.
But there is a.
There is a formal procedure, it starts on the bottom of page four and continues, it's similar to a grievance, but talks about, you know, what happens and who hears it and all that, um, and then he also added the last sentence, "An employee against whom a harassment complaint is made and who chooses to participate in the informal procedure shall have the right to union and/or legal representation," and for me, that's a, that's just a no-brainer, so he's kind of made clear some things that were right, and I appreciate it, so thank you very much.
Good work, Mr. Madieres.
I'm good with that.
So, that being said, I was just thinking that this is a precursor, and your first reading of the anti-harassment policy would start next week, I've already included the two.
Do we have to read the whole thing?
I hope not.
Do we have to read the whole thing?
That's the way we've been doing it, yeah, but we're not going to do it tonight.
Not tonight.
And I, this has already included the amendments that you and Selectmen Goulart had previously sent over, so.
I only had minor edits.
No, minor edits, yep, no, they were all valid, and, you know, I, I appreciate feedback, but I'll have to work in something about the training.
So you'll get that in there, and then you'll give it to us, and then we'll.
And then you'll do your first reading.
Got it, sounds good.
Before, I just wanted to thank all the unions for their cooperation, assistance, feedback, uh, I'm sure town administrator Aaronstein appreciates it, I'm sure the board of selectmen appreciates it, I appreciate it, um, and I think this is exactly how the town should work, we should be working together, we should be having an open dialogue, and we should be moving forward together, so it's great, great work, great work.
And this was a goal on my contract, so I appreciate everybody who helped.
Yes, it helped her achieve her goals.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next, the next item on our agenda is, uh, to discuss the Boudreau, Bood?
Boudreau.
Boudreau land donation, uh, and in this, uh, we, we started discussing last week, but, uh, took it under advisement, and what this is, is this is the, uh, trustee for Francis H. Boudreau, uh, and Elaine Boudreau, who want to donate two pieces of property, uh, lots fifteen and sixteen, which are down off of Pleasant Street, down towards the border, and so the question is, do we want to accept this, uh, Tom Ferry, uh, let me